Dr. Brian Westfall.
Good afternoon. My name's Dale Lyman. I'm the exalted ruler of Frostburg Elks, number 470. And I'd like to first of all, thank the Allegheny County Commissioners for your support of our 40th Annual Derby Day. It was a tremendous day, great crowds, and everything went as planned. And we really had a good day and raised a lot of money for our charities. The Benevolent Protective Order of the Elks is a national fraternal organization. We have about 875,000 members nationwide.
Wow.
And we're dedicated to serving the community of Frostburg and actually all of Allegheny County in Western Maryland. In fact, we have members throughout Western Maryland in our lodge. Our emphasis is on conducting youth programs, serving our veterans, promoting Americanism and patriotism, and doing charitable work in the community in which we live and work. We also provide social opportunities for our members and enjoy camaraderie while raising funds to perform our good deeds. So, we want to thank the Commissioners for recognizing Patriotism Week from September 5 through 11. And we look forward to receiving the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. This is an official proclamation that reads, "The Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks, through the Constitution, is a patriotic order, whereas the order promotes the ideals that the citizens of the United States of America live in freedom won through great sacrifices and many tribulations, which have provided the foundation for free, prosperous, and independent life. It's fitting and proper to recognize this freedom and to honor the nation which provides it. We, the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 5 through 11, 2016, as National Patriotism Week in Allegheny County, and urge all citizens to join with the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks in expressing gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship. In this sign, the 25th Day of August, 2016, Bill Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jake Shade." Thank you, gentlemen. Alrighty, I think our technical difficulties have been fixed. Allegheny College of Maryland, the Opportunity Scholarship Update. Dr. Bambera.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Shade.
Good evening.
And good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and friends. On behalf of our Board of Trustees, and we have Mr. Kim Leonard, our Chair, with us today, and our Foundation Board of Directors, and we have Dr. Aldi Klinger with us today. Our students, faculty, and staff, we thank you for the support of this program. Your investment was greatly and has greatly enhanced the economic opportunities for our citizens and our community by supporting education, job training, and career preparation, as well as supporting families and the core values that reflect our community. We are most grateful for the vision that you had to make this happen. The future of the region's well-being is dependent on having an educated and skilled workforce. And Allegheny College of Maryland is committed to serving as an educational partner to meet this need. We will continue to develop, enhance our academic and career programs and instructional delivery systems to meet the needs of the community. At this time, I'd like to ask David Jones, our Executive Director of our Foundation, to come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. Again, I'm very, very pleased to be here today to provide a year-two report on the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship Program. Being a good steward of these funds is critically important to us, and I'm very pleased to provide an update from year two, which is a fiscal year 2016 update. And if you'll allow me to distribute that. We've put together a year-two report, which you have in front of you. And I want to quickly go over this. I think it's important just to show the impact of this program. As you see in the front of the cover, it says, "Opportunity Scholarship Impact." And it truly does provide an impact. Your support for job training, education helps to better our students, helps to better our community. Inside the front cover, I have eight fast facts from fiscal year 2018, which I think further demonstrate the impact of this program. Recipients of this investment represent every community in our county. Students from every public and private high school in the county, as well as homeschool and GED students, have been awarded funding through this program. Nearly every major at the college, every curriculum is represented. The age range of recipients starts at age 17 and goes through age 58 with an average age of 24. The jumpstart component of the program helps Allegheny County Public School students who receive free and reduced lunch. This $100 per course award covers the full family cost of taking an early college course. Certainly, it's great partnership with the public schools in our area. The Merit Scholarship encourages academic excellence. Over 250 awards were made from that. The tuition subsidy for credit students helps to offset the tuition that's not covered by federal, state, or other support. Over 225 awards were made. And the Continuing Education and Workforce Development Scholarship supports our county residents taking professional and workforce training. And again, over 250 awards were made this past year. On the next page, it talks about the four different programs. We've listened to our community, the advisory groups, the local development committee, and we've continued these on because they seem to meet, and we hear over and over again through our assessment, that these meet the needs of our community. Inside the center fold, if you open to the center, I think this really shows the nuts and the bolts of this program, the impact. On the far left, with the green highlight, it shows the number of awards we've given out for summer, fall, spring, workforce development, the average age, the GPA. The GPA average for all the recipients is a 3.38. Forty recipients had a 3.75 or above grade point average. Nearly all of our academic and transfer programs are represented here, from accounting down through university studies, almost A to Z. The Continuing Education and Workforce Development component of the program is critical for our area. We focused on advanced manufacturing, our IT Center for Excellence. You can see just 12 examples of courses and programs that have been funded through your support for Allegheny County residents. High schools, again, from Allegheny through Mountain Ridge, every public high school, every private high school, GED and homeschools represented, as well as the cities listed there represent the cities that our student recipients come from. It's comprehensive, and I think you'll see that it truly does make an impact. On the next page, it talks more about the college. And as Commissioners, as you invest in the community college, I just wanted to point out just a few bullets that I think show your impact. And not me speaking up here telling the impact, but what private, independent groups have told us. Our students enjoy a 15.2% rate of return on their investment in ACM. Because of the higher earnings because of a college degree, the Maryland State Income Tax Base increases by almost $11 million each year. Tax parity return of $1.30 for every dollar spent. State and local government sees an annual return of approximately 4.3%. Something we're especially proud of, the Brookins Institution last year rated ACM one of the top 20 community and technical colleges in the country. This is in the top 1% of all community colleges. And again, not something we apply for, not something that we try to solicit. They came to us after they reviewed our data based on the future economic success of the graduates. I think that shows the quality of the education we offer and the impact we have for our community. We receive hundreds of thank you notes every year. And on the back page, you'll see just some sample quotes from students who have received money. I won't read through them, but it shows the depth and breadth of our students, the non-traditional, such as the second bullet, a student who wanted to go back to college since 2012, and how this has helped that student achieve his goals. The single mothers that are quoted here, the families that are impacted by the Opportunity Scholarship, the non-traditional students as well. Sometimes, it's said that a photo is worth 1,000 words. I believe that a video is worth even more than 1,000 words. What I have to present to the Commissioners is, this is the original thank you letter submitted by every recipient of the scholarship funds. And I gave this to you last year in a file. But I've done something different this year. I think, just to show the impact, if I could hand that to you. We photocopied and bound every thank you letter. There are hundreds here, double-sided, many types, some came in talking about the impact of this program. And if I could distribute that to you, just to show the impact from the parents, from the students who talk about the money that's been given to them, their future goals, they sometimes feel out their whole heart about what they've been through, and what they've overcome, and how ACM has changed their lives. So if I could distribute that to you, it's just a small way to say thank you for your impact. And if I may, I'd like to just show a real brief video talking about the impact of this program in our community.
When I look at it from an employer perspective, I'm going to say probably about a quarter to a third of our employees have graduated from Allegheny College of Maryland because of the strong allied health professions that exist at Allegheny College of Maryland. It has just become absolutely crucial for us in our existence. We are, there are a lot of my colleagues that are very jealous about having the availability of Allegheny College of Maryland for primarily our nursing program, our pharmacy, radiology, laboratory, respiratory therapy, the list goes on. Allegheny College of Maryland is absolutely critical to the success and existence of the Western Maryland Health System. One of the reasons why we located the new hospital on Willbrook Road was because of Allegheny College of Maryland, the strong relationship that exists between the college and the health system in that both of us benefit so greatly.
I just want to thank all the donors for everything they did, the money they gave to us. It's going to help us with our future, and hopefully, we will be able to help and give back to everyone.
The education at HC has really made it easy for me to get along with things. The smaller class sizes and everyone being so willing to help has really helped me along the way and just kind of gave me that boost I needed to get to the next level. I'd really like to thank the Foundation for giving me the opportunity. It really helps when, being a non-traditional college student and working a few part-time jobs, to try and take care of those expenses, the scholarship really helps in many ways and takes a huge load off of my back. So I appreciate that.
When I first heard about the Allegheny College Opportunity Scholarship, I thought it'd be a great opportunity for me. I think it's a great experience to get public speaking and just put back into your college. I feel like that is very important. They give us so much, and just for us to give our time here and there is a really great opportunity for all of us.
I think a lot of times, we would like to make a difference in the world and a bigger impact on maybe our country as a whole, but you have to begin at some level. I think change starts with one person, and then other people can feed off of that energy.
It's helped me be able to further my career within Fastenal Company and gain some skill sets that would allow me to further my career within Allegheny County with some other job opportunities as well. I would say thank you because it gives me an opportunity to further my education, like I said earlier, and just get a better job opportunity so I can provide for my family. And I'd like to say thanks for that boost and giving me the opportunity to do that.
The Opportunity Scholarship was a big help to me because, how I mentioned before, my mom was diagnosed with an MS. Now that I'm 18, we lose, I can't remember the exact month, but a good amount of money each month. So, it really has helped me with my books and just schooling all around and made it very possible for me to come here.
I have four children, a nine-year-old, a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and a two-year-old. One, we've gained through the years of my college experience. But this is really why I do this, because I can show them that I'm not your traditional student. I didn't come right out of high school, and that I'm their teacher, that no matter what it is, when you want to do it, how old you are, you can always fulfill your dreams and complete whatever goals you have set for yourself. I just want to say thank you to everyone who gave me the opportunity and trusted me to start these programs that I've now almost completed. And the Foundation Office, who has really given me the greatest opportunity to get to where I am today, as worry-free as possible because he really made it possible for me not to have to struggle and worry about one day for the next, whenever we go from two jobs to one job, and so that I can complete my goal to be there for my family.
Again, I echo what the students have said. I say thank you. This program does make a tremendous impact. This time, I'm real pleased to introduce the President of ACM Foundation, Dr. Aldi Klinger.
Commissioners, staff, thank you again for having us here today. It's always my pleasure to come before you. You know, I was sitting talking with my parents this morning, and I said, you know, I said, "Your money that you spend out there really goes toward helping a lot of kids because they go to Rocky Gap twice a year." Allegheny College works collaboratively to better economic development opportunities, provide the education, job, training, and career preparation services needed by our residents. This college makes an impact like no other entity in our community. The comprehensive scholarship statistics are impressive. The documented economic impact shown by the external entities is powerful. But the quotes from the students that you just saw, Allegheny County residents, show that this program is life-changing. As a matter of fact, in my staff, I have 11 people that work in my office, and eight of them have attended the college. The front cover of the report says, "Impact," and I can't think of a better word to show the importance of this program. Again, we are most grateful for your support and investment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, we were very fortunate in December of a year ago to be honored by the University of Maryland School of Public Affairs and Maryland Association of Counties to receive the county's Best Practices Award for this scholarship program. And there's a lot of things that we do around here that once in a while, we wish we could set the reset button on. And tonight, we're going to do that and honor this program again. So if you all would come up again, Commissioners?
Before we do this, Bill, you want to say, "This isn't easy to receive." Do you want to say how difficult it is, what we're up against?
Well, Mako gives out one award that is to the best program that's done throughout the entire state of Maryland. It's in Kibbutz County, including your big counties such as Montgomery County, Carroll County. All the counties were in line to receive this. Allegheny County got it. The University of Maryland found this program unbelievable, thought it should be an example for across the country. So, we're very proud to receive the award, except we didn't feel that just Allegheny County shouldn't receive the award. You're our partners. You deserve the award.
So, we received this last December at Cambridge, and it's from the University of Maryland School of Public Policy and the Maryland Association of Counties. And it's the Academy of For Excellence Local Governance, 2015 Best Practices Award, and it's awarded to the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship Program, an ACM. Congratulations. Alrighty, before we continue, if you would like to speak later this evening, we do have a sign-up sheet. So, anyone's free to speak. You have five minutes, but we do ask you to sign in. And we put that sheet back up there if you're interested. As we move to our action agenda tonight, item number three is Code Home Rule Bill 4-16. And we are voting on this tonight. We had the public hearing on the 11th. As we move forward, we're trying to decide what kind of economy we think this county's going to have in the next 15 or 20 years. We've developed an incentive program. We've been working on it for a couple of months. It seems like forever. But basically, what it is, it's targeted towards businesses, especially in the technology sector very broadly. And it does provide incentives for small businesses, less than 25 employees, to locate in Allegheny County. It's not going to change the world, but it does show, look, we're open for business. This is something that no other county in the state has done or is doing. And it's really a way for us to stand apart from everyone else and just give us a little bit of a boost. So, we haven't had any public comment on it. We've moved it right through, and tonight would be the final passage of that.
Commissioner, before we vote on this, I do want to thank you because this has been kind of your baby from the get-go. So, thank you. I know you've put a lot of work into this. And hopefully, after the passage with this, within the next few months, we'll have a little bit of something extra to add to this.
Absolutely. And hopefully, this will be in effect October 1?
Yes.
I think that's what we're going for. So, very soon, we'll be able to start advertising this, along with everything else we've been working on. And again, it's a start. So, we start with this, and we hope to keep it growing. So, is there a motion?
Do you want to make a motion from you, Jake?
I'll make the motion tonight.
Will you adopt 4-16? I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen. Item number four is the, what would you call it, Quad Annual Salary Study Commission, once every four years. Mr. Rudd?
Yes. State law provides that for a salary study commission for Allegheny County, for the county commissioner's salary, the Board of Education, the Election Board, I'm going to miss somebody, but anyway, the Liquor Board, all those. And anyway, what's happened is, the commission is appointed by the Commissioners from certain organizations. The law sets forth what those organizations are. They nominate somebody. The only one that you're getting to nominate this time is the Lee Women Voters No Longer exists. So, if that organization does not provide a name or no longer exists, then the Commissioners get to make a nominee, which on this list is Mary Beth Pelosi as an at-large member. All the other organizations that you see here, which is the Chamber of Commerce, and the two central committees of the two political parties, the Allegheny Garrett Fire and Rescue Association, et cetera, have put forward nominees who are there. You appoint, they then meet, they pick their own chair. They then recommend sometime early next year what the salaries would be for the next term of all of those organizations. You then can approve that. You can set a salary that's less. You can set a salary that's higher than that. So, they have to start their work by the first of the year. So, it would be appropriate that the committee be appointed now so they can get organized whenever they feel the need.
Sure. And for clarity, the people on the committee will be Mr. Stuart Zapsky, representing the Allegheny County Chamber, Mr. Clarence Broadwater from the Fire and Rescue Association, Mr. Charles Taylor from the Democratic Central Committee, Ms. Georgine McLaughlin from the Farm Bureau, Ms. Tiffany Mock from the Republican Central Committee, Mr. Lawrence Wolf from the Western Maryland Central Labor Council, and Mary Beth Pelosi is at-large. Good group.
Make a motion that we accept these nominees?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, moving to our consent agenda, Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, we have six items on your consent agenda for consideration this evening. Impossible action, item number five, Commissioners, is a motion to accept bids from interested parties for five properties located throughout Allegheny County which were declared surplus by the Board, and have been through the county's tax sale process. Item number six is a motion to award bid for the completion of the Eubanks Creek Stream Restoration Project in the amount of $86,350 to Appalachian Stream Restoration LLC. The funds for this project are being provided by a grant to the county from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. And that grant covers 100% of the projected cost. Item seven, Commissioners, is a motion to award the county's small bridge inspection contract to Johnson, Murmeran, and Thompson for $106,195.73. This contract will cover 60 of the county's small bridge classification structures throughout the county. Commissioners, items eight and nine are motions to accept state homeland security funds for fiscal years 2014 and 2016. The amount awarded to the county for 2014 is a supplemental appropriation, and we'll use the money. Item 10, Commissioners, is a motion to authorize the county administrator to execute an extension agreement for a 24-month retainer with the Smith Planning and Design LLC Group here out of Cumberland to provide as-needy planning services for Allegheny County.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
None.
Is there a motion?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, we did receive bids this week, and open bids for a new steel dump truck for the county's roads department. And I do have a piece of correspondence relative to an initiative that is near and dear to your hearts. And it's a piece of correspondence to the Honorable Kumar Barve, who is the Chairman of the Environmental Transportation Committee with the Maryland House Delegates. And the letter reads as follows.
Please read it.
"The Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County wishes to express our interest and support for the proposed drilling and development of natural gas resources in Western Maryland, most specifically Allegheny County. Based on the findings of the final report of the Maryland Marcellus Shale Safe Drilling Initiative Study, the economic impact in terms of job creation, wages, and tax revenues for Allegheny County will be very significant for at least the first 10 years following initial drilling. While we greatly support the findings of the report and are excited about the potential economic impact to Western Maryland, we also recognize that regulation to drilling, albeit reasonably stringent as proposed, are necessary in order to preserve the integrity of the properties and surrounding areas affected by drilling. We strongly urge the committee to look favorably on the prospect of natural gas drilling in Western Maryland, and we look forward to working with the state of Maryland on this very important economic development initiative for Allegheny County." Commissioners?
Very good, sir.
Can I pass that along for your signature? And Commissioners, I have one other item on my report. I see both quarries in the back seat today, back row, rather. And I was going to mention that in light of all the recent public discussion and discourse concerning dirt track racing at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds, that we do have a party in-house tonight who is exploring an opportunity of continuing the county's history of racing at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds property. And with that, I won't steal anyone else's thunder this evening if they're prepared to speak at some point in time, and/or Commissioners, if you had something else that you wanted to add. So, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Everly. Mr. Rudd?
I have nothing.
Great. Commissioner Valentine?
As most of you probably know, all three Commissioners were at Mako last week. It was another great was another great conference. A lot of good information was shared there. It was great to have an opportunity to have a private meeting with both the governor and the lieutenant governor. Probably the most interesting thing is the governor left us know that he has not given up the fight on getting highway funds up this way. The legislature last year said all money spent for transportation has to go through a rating system. Everybody told them at that time the rating system was heavily cited against smaller counties because most of the rating is based on population. Well, probably the worst factor about it, they give you about 10 priorities you have to fill in, what your priorities are. Once they get a total for that, they create a multiplier based on the percentage of the state's population you have. So here in Allegheny County, we've got 1% of the state's population. They double that. So doubling our percentage of population, our multiplier becomes 1.02. Montgomery County has 17% of the state's population. Their multiplier becomes 1.34. I don't think it takes a whole lot of mathematical knowledge to know where everything's going. The first set of projects that have been awarded, nine of the 10 projects went to Montgomery County. And that's the way it's going to keep happening year after year after year unless the governor can get this changed. So we're going to give our full support in the governor's efforts.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Commissioner Brage?
Very good. Well, I'd normally have another meeting tonight to attend, but I'll be able to stick around for this one tonight. So I just want to thank Governor Hogan for what was recently done with the repeal of the septic tank law where his private citizens now do not have to put in nitrogen removal system on their septic tanks. It was really, it basically killed us for the last several years. And unless you're a bay-critical area, you're now free to go building again. So thank you very much, Governor Hogan. That is...
That took the cost of the septic system from $35,000 back down to about $4,000.
Yeah, that was one of the biggest things that's come out of Annapolis in the last several years. And there's not been much talk of it, so...
And you don't hear much talk of the 10,000 gallons of raw sewage that went into the bay from Baltimore City this week?
Right.
You would think that may have a little bit more of an impact than a house in Allegheny County would.
Yeah.
Maybe slightly, but I'm not a...
I think the governor's remarks, there was absolutely no scientific proof that anything from Allegheny County ever made it there for its nitrogen from private septic systems.
It's a long ride.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very briefly, I did get to go to a meeting this week. It was hosted by the city of Cumberland. They are moving forward with their plan to revitalize downtown. Part of that's opening up Baltimore Street to traffic. And basically it's, look, if businesses want to locate there, they have to have some street frontage. They're not going to locate in someplace where the only place you can get there is walking. So there's infrastructure upgrades that need done. Basically, below the mall has been untouched since the mid-'70s. So that'll include water, sewer, some high-tech fiber, some other just electrical stuff that just needs done. It's been put off for a long time. So that was nice to meet up with them and really see how we can work together because there's no situation where Cumberland succeeds and Allegheny County fails, or Allegheny County fails, Cumberland succeeds. They're a big part of our population and we've got to move forward together. So that's a good project for them to keep working on. Same with the Maryland Avenue project. There seems to be a little momentum going forward on their side. And same with us. So we're going to keep moving forward and keep increasing our tax base.
Very good, sir.
All righty. With that, we're going to move to our public comment. And our first person signed up is Ms. Tracy Lewis.
Yes, please.
Please.
Hello, I'm Tracy Lewis and I'm from Cumberland. And I just want to talk about the Cumberland Raceway. Most of our drivers have sponsors that are from this area. And no sponsors have to give them permission to go to other tracks to run. My husband's one of them. So we have a race car sitting in our basement that can't be ran. It's been sitting there since Cumberland closed up. I think he's ran maybe three times. That's the same with most of our other drivers. They built race cars for Cumberland, can't run them. They're sitting in their basements. That's why they wasted them. I grew up at the Cumberland Raceway. My uncles ran there. Glenn Hill, Jimmy Mattie. We all started out as strangers at the first race. We have all now become one big happy racing family. We've made memories, everything. That's all we're asking is for a chance to open up our track again. Let us come back as a family. Let us run again. Thank you.
Commissioners, if I'm missing something, please, please let me know this. Did you take a formal vote the last time we got together to close a racetrack?
No.
And to put it into?
We've been looking for a promoter.
Well, we've been looking for a promoter, but we did receive a recommendation from a consultant, did we not? That said, hey, you know, so there are a lot of recommendations that were in that report.
Yeah.
And the very, very expensive improvements.
Some are very expensive.
Some are very, very expensive. I think that perhaps at some point in time, maybe over the next three to five years, some of those projects, we might be able to complete in-house with our own crews. But I still don't recall, I know there was some, a bunch of comments made about perhaps the future of racing at fairgo, but I don't recall Commissioners taking formal action to close that facility and foreclose on the opportunity for a promoter to come in at some point in time. So unless I'm wrong...
Hey, I hope we get one.
Look, and I think that's the opinion of all three of us, is if someone wants to come in, great, we'll welcome them with open arms. Go ahead, Bill.
I just like that. Number one, I was first round racetrack at the age of six. My father started sponsoring a car for a driver by the name of Louis Leatherman. A lot of the older racers know Louis. He then promoted the Ford Ashby Speedway for two years until it was sold. I parked my butt in the first racing seat at the age of 16 at the South Penn Speedway in a super-modified car and spent 30 years. So I know the passion behind dirt track racing. There've been a lot of comments made on Facebook pages and all that are 100% false, saying the county's not really supportive of racing at Cumberland. How about promoters like John Barton, the promoter that I tracked for years? He's the one that put the blacktop pit road in there. He put the concrete wall before the pit. He also put the guardrails up and brought NASCAR USAC. We've also had continuous racing for about 20 years. You had Ben Evans there. You had Western Maryland Street Riders there. You had Bob Salafi there. Rick Jones was there for almost 20 years. Now, the last two years, Rick Jones had the track. It was pretty obvious he wasn't interested in running Cumberland Speedway anymore. He said it was due to lack of cars and a lack of attendance at the race, which it probably was because the racers weren't happy with the track. I was elected in 2010. In 2012, I tried to get Mr. Jones to relieve himself of his contract so we could start looking for another promoter in 2012. His last two years, he ran one race one year and zero races the next year. Almost the day that his contract ran out, we had Craig Nippenberg sign a contract. So that doesn't sound to me like Commissioners that weren't interested in finding promoters for that track. Some of the statements made about guardrails and all that, if anybody wants to see the contract that was signed, or Mr. Nippenberg was going to be responsible for guardrails. Then later on, when he came back and said he didn't realize what guardrails were going to cost, he came to us and said, I found the total price for guardrails. You guys buy them. I'll install them. I've got that signed document here. What he bought was about 1,000 feet of guardrail. No mounting posts, no mounting brackets. The county paid for it because that's what he told us he needed. That track, if you're going to go all the way around the track, it takes 3,300 feet for just one row of guardrail. And nobody's going to race on that track unless there's two rows of guardrail. It's just not safe. So our only requirements of a promoter is it's going to be a quality track and it's going to be a safe racetrack to run on. I've seen people get killed. It's not going to happen there. So we are looking for promoters. You guys, you come up with a promoter. You know the racing industry. You say that we've cut racing dates to make it impossible for people to run. When Craig first came to us, his contract was for seven race dates. That's what he wanted. Later, he came and said, I need more race dates. We gave him 20 race dates. Then Mr. Rose came in and he wanted to run a lot of events. He actually selected 19 race dates. So they cut the number of race dates right there. When I saw Mr. Rose's proposal, I've got it here for you, a couple of the events, he was going to run Saturday nights and then Sunday. And I told Craig, Craig, this is a fresh track. I don't know if you can do a turnaround on this track to have super-late models and modified one night and then to have late models and sprint cars the next night. Those classes tear a track up. And so we did not tell Craig, no. We told him, stop and think about it. Plus, if you read Mr. Rose's proposal, he was going to have these high-class classes of cars, which are big payouts. We've got seating for 2,000 people at Cumberland Speedway. One night, open to all female spectators, free of charge. How many seats was that going to take? You could make payoff with 1,000 paid attendants. Another night, all children, free of charge. Now, he never put what age limit that was going to be, but all children. Another night, it was going to be anybody that was in law enforcement, free of charge. Another night, it was going to be anybody with EMS or volunteer fire company. Ask Danny how many people that could put. That could put 2,000 free people in the grandstand. How are you going to make payoff? So those are the things I pointed out to Craig. Craig cut it back to 14 racing dates. He did that. It wasn't the county. We actually, when Mr. Rose came to us, he wanted to make Saturdays and Sundays both. We charge rent for that track and we charge only for the day that you actually run. Now, it costs the county a pile of money whenever Mr. Jones had the track, running one race in a year, because we can't rent the multi-use building out if there's going to be a stock car racer because of the noise and the parking and the security. Mr. Rose, he wanted to have Saturday events, but have Sunday for a rain date. So that was asking us to give him another day, free of charge, when we'd get no income. Craig went through the schedule, talked to a couple of people. So he came up with 14 racing dates. That was Craig that cut that. It wasn't the county. Because whenever we gave them the Sunday dates, they could have had 40-some racing dates. So it was not the county that did it. It was not the county that took away any guardrails. And the county, yes, is looking for promoters. These gentlemen back here came to us the other day about possibly running a series. It's not oval track racing. It's not what you guys want. But I spent two hours with those people out there. Yes, we're willing to listen, but come to us with a proposal. Come to us with somebody that's got a plan, how they can operate this track. And you're racers. You know, first thing, you don't get into racing to make money because if you do, you're going into the wrong deal. You're going to lose money anytime you're in racing. So a promoter that's come in, he's got to have a good plan, how he's going to be able to make enough money to operate this track. And the reason why the guardrails are going to be the responsibility of the promoter is that gives him some skin in the game. He's got an investment. So he's got to run to get money back on his investment. Mr. Jones had no investment in that track. I don't know how many of you run a business, but I'm quite sure nobody handed you a business free of charge. Said, here's a business, you just take the profit. That promoter's going to have some skin in the game, so he runs that track. And he's got to run it profitably. And that's good for you. Because if he doesn't make a profit, you don't get your promised payoff. Which, if you ran for Mr. Jones, you know that. Because you ran your races and whenever you want to get your payoff, you've got less than what you were expecting. So the county is fully supportive of running that track. We lose money if that track's not running. And people will yell about Kevin Camel. Kevin Camel loses money if that track's not running. And I can show you documentation here where they would ask one day for open race dates, next day Kevin had them all the open race dates. So we are fully supportive of full operation of that track. So, you know, whenever you're talking, whenever you're putting your group together, you know, make sure you're getting the truthful information because I think you're being led the wrong way. The county's here, willing to be partners with anybody that goes in on that track. We're supplying the lighting. We're supplying all the utilities. And that track was offered to Craig Nippenberg for $850 a night whenever he ran. You talk to other promoters, ask them what just their electric bill is for a single night of racing. You don't burn those big lights for nothing. So we're not out to gouge anybody. We're not making it impossible for a promoter to come in and be profitable. But you know what the racing industry is. You need to find a promoter. And that promoter is going to take care of those guardrails. We've got guardrails sitting out there. So it's a safe racing environment for all you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Last person signed up to speak is Ms. Rianne Holler.
Well, Mr. Valentine, thank you for those comments. And from the board, we really do appreciate, from my point of view, sitting back and listening to that, it really reassures me that it's not a lost cause. Most of us have had, like Tracy had said, we grew up at the racetrack. And it just got to the point where, from our point of view, we don't want to see it die. And again, it's reassuring to know that you have efforts to work with us to get that going. Most of us here, as far as, we've never ran a racetrack. But we are, as a committee, willing to do the research and to do some background and to figure out what we need to do to make it happen. We also know that it's not going to happen overnight. So we just need reassurance that we'll have time to be able to bring you the information that you're wanting for us to prove to you that this can happen. Basically, you know, from our committee point of view, our goal is to work with you, not against you. In this day and age, there's always he said, she said. Hopefully, we can put that all past us so we can move forward and come to some kind of agreement and some kind of cooperation to find another, to bring back a great attraction to this area. It does, you know, it does cost a lot of money, but it does also bring money. It brings reassurance that families have something to do on the weekends. My son said tonight, he's getting ready to graduate this year. And he said, tonight, I even made sure, I wanted to ask him, you know, if we bring this, if we can get this racetrack going, you're 17, are you going to be there? And he said, yeah, the only reason why I haven't been there is because there hasn't been any races. So I think together, we can really make this happen. And you can see our support on Facebook. Yes, there's always going to be, you know, controversial conversations and comments. But I hope, again, together, we can just put all that aside and bring back racing in our area.
Ms. Holler, if you would do us a favor, when you leave, there's two gentlemen sitting in the back of the room, back there, I don't want to say their names for over the air, that I think if you would sit down and talk to them a little bit, I think between the pair of yous, the whole group of yous, you might can find a mutual benefit in each other. Because I was speaking with them the other day. They got a good idea for what they want to do, but I believe the two can be combined into something good where it would help both parties out. So the gentleman's right back there, they're fantastic guys. So I think you all need to meet each other. And hopefully, between both of yous, we'd be looking forward to working something really good with yous.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I have an idea...
Yeah, and I think, you know, I have an idea of what you're talking about there. And I think that's a great opportunity. You know, it doesn't just have to be, from my point of view, it doesn't just have to be dirt track, stock car racing. But that's what we want. We want stock car racing back.
Well, I think there's room for both.
Yeah. And that's what we also want to establish, to make sure that point is available, that there is room for both, not just one.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
The county last year did not spend countless weeks hauling close to 200 tons of fresh clay to that track, just because we didn't want the track there. If we wanted to close the track, we'd have closed the track.
Well, and again, I think...
We hauled fresh clay that...
Yeah, well, actually, 2,000 tons.
And I understand that, but again, that also, you know, and we appreciate that. But we also, it also goes back to making sure that it's safe racing, too. So we want, that's why we have to come together...
What I try to impress upon Craig, the most important day is opening day.
Right.
Opening day, when the racers come there for the first time, they better see that track looks safe. They better see that track is smooth. They better see that it's not going to get dusty because it's been properly watered. They'll come back. Racers pull in their opening days, they have the guardrails laying on the ground. They see ruts in the track before the first lap's been run. They're not going to unload their cars, and they're not coming back.
And I want either.
And I think that's what killed Rick Jones.
And I agree. And that's, I want neither. That's why all these, you know, I want my driver to be safe.
Yeah, well, we know it's quite a big investment in a car, too, to run.
Right.
It's not, they're not understanding.
Right. So, I mean, I think we're all on the same page as far as what needs to happen. I think we just need to come together as how to make it happen. And I think that's what our whole goal is, as a committee and as a community.
Basically, what you need to do is find a promoter. That's number one. If we can get you race dates, what you have to realize, right now this year, we've got something like 252 days of events at the fairgrounds without the racetrack. Some of those events can happen during the day of the race. But we can't have events going at that multi-use building. The cars are out there running the track because, number one, noise; number two, parking; and number three, if you're there at that multi-use building, you can just walk over there and stand at the fence and watch races. So, you know, we need to know ahead of time what race dates are there. Like I said, we charge only for the night. If it rains out, if you've got a race scheduled for the night and it gets rained out, you've got no expense in it. Now, it's cost the county, because that tonight, if we would have known there wasn't going to be any racing, we could have had something else run it there. You don't get charged for that, zero.
That's the only thing that goes on the fairground that doesn't pay regardless. Yeah, they're the only ones that gets a rain break, for say.
Yeah. And unfortunately, none of us can...
Yeah, we was all taken by surprise just as much as you guys was. We was against this, because I could, actually, there've been quite a few arguments here the last couple of days. I said, "I don't know where everyone's getting their information," because I don't wear a thing that says Commissioner. I wear something I work for a living, and everyone where I go, "Them damn Commissioners are stopping this," and I'm sitting right there. I said, "Stopping what?" And then I end up in a hell of a big argument over this, that we was against mud bogs, demolition derbies, races. I'm sitting there thinking, "This is all stuff I go to. I haven't heard none of this stuff." And, "Oh, yeah, they did this at a meeting." And I'm thinking, "They did it? Now, that would, they would be me." And I don't know one thing they're talking about.
I know, you correct me.
But almost the goodness, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of Commissioner Shea, Bill's kind of the race guru. I just want to go watch. I don't know nothing about the track with the cars or nothing else, except they're expensive. That's more of him, but we've been very supportive. Would you say so?
We have. And I think that the racetrack is not being utilized in the best interest for anyone right now.
That's why that was in that report. That company that came in, did the report, their assignment was see how to make this fairgrounds work profitably and work the best for the taxpayers and the county. And they took and looked at a racetrack that in the last six years had run 20 races, and the last four years ran zero races. So they're saying, "That's not profitable." And it's not profitable sitting there. So we need to get a promoter and a regular weekly races there to make it profitable.
I agree with that. And I think that, you know, boils down to, again, putting situations that, you know, of course, the past is never going to be exactly behind you, but words, again, have been said, like you mentioned. And we want to be able to put that behind us and to start fresh, and to be able to work again. I can't stress it enough. We want to be able to work with you to make this happen. And we obviously have, you know, a community backing that wants to support us also. So, I mean, the commitment is there from us.
I think we got, all got a step in the right direction here, so let's just say...
Thank you for coming.
Commissioners, may I add one point? You can sit down. I see Paul Kale sitting back there, and we've had a difficult two weeks in sharing information with Kevin Camoff at the fairgrounds. But if anyone has ever spent any time or has ever invested their own time or money doing anything at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds, you will not find a more dedicated public servant than Kevin Camoff, someone who would give his heart and soul for that asset for Allegheny County. He's a very unique individual. We're truly blessed to have him there. So in the future, moving forward, when someone misunderstands something that takes place, I'm going to recommend to you right now that you give Kevin Camoff the benefit of the doubt. Kevin is not against any type of racing activity at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds. And the county staff, who devoted the past 12 to 14 years trying to figure out a way to best improve a caretaker's home or build a new caretaker's home, we take exception to comments that were made concerning possibly even burning down Kevin's home. So be very, very careful moving forward, and recognize that Kevin is a fantastic asset for this community, and he will be defended, heart and soul, by everybody sitting up at his dials. You need to know that, okay? That's all I got, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Everly. With that, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, September 15th, right here in this room at 5:00 PM. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it.